Hello, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Saint Helena Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 1st. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Dan, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Camaro, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Commissioner Hale?
Here.
Vice Chair Pont?
Here.
And Chair Hardy?
Here.
That brings us to the public forum section of the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission on matters that are not on our agenda, which means that we cannot really discuss them, but you're free to bring up anything that's on your mind. Is there any member of the public who would like to address us in the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent items. We have one item on consent, that's the approval of minutes for September 3rd, 2019. Again, anyone either on the commission or a member of the public can ask for an item to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Is there anyone on the commission who would like to remove this from consent? Anyone in the audience who would like this removed from consent? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move the consent agenda?
Second.
Ms. Camaro?
Vice Chair Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Hale?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Abstain, as I was not present. That brings us to our first public hearing, item 5.1, for a project at 1515 Pine Street that includes a demolition permit and design review. Mr. Guston, I believe this is yours to present.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request, as you noted, to demolish the existing building. Everything on the property will be scraped except for the big walnut tree and be replaced with a single-story, two-bedroom, two-bath, single-family residence that consists of essentially two modules connected by a foyer. There'll be a detached 648-square-foot garage, and at some point in the future, the applicant proposes to add a accessory dwelling unit. The development standards for the property, the applicant has met or exceeded all of the standards in terms of what is allowed. The building itself that exists has passed all historic review and is not a historic structure by any criteria. And with that, staff would recommend approval of the demolition permit and the design review subject to the findings and conditions in the resolution.
Ms. Chairman. Yes, are there any questions for staff?
I have one. Oh, go ahead. If you could just go on page 11 and just explain to me the setback.
The one with all the charts?
Yeah, the one with the chart, it says, I mean, especially, I just didn't understand the 90-foot setback and the "as proposed" and the existing is 60.
I understand, no. And we grappled with this because the lot is so large and the construction is relatively small, but we wanted to put the information out there and couldn't think of any other way to do it except to show both setbacks from each side where the building was in relationship to the property lines. So, on one side, for example, the accessory dwelling unit down at the bottom, it says 10 feet and 63 feet. On one side, it's 10 feet from the property line and it's 63 feet from the other side property line.
Oh, okay.
So, I couldn't figure any other way to present it and still give all the information that was necessary. So, yes, it is kind of complicated, but...
Thank you. But I guess, so, but does that mean that the garage existing setback is 34 feet and it will go to 24 feet? Does that mean it's going to be 10 feet?
The garage would be, the setbacks on the garage would be 13 and 5 and 3/4 feet relative.
Oh, all right. So, it's, I guess they're all within the standards?
Yes, or exceeds.
Okay, thank you. That's all, I just needed that clarification.
I just want to make a note that unfortunately, the software we use to enter in our staff reports isn't very table-friendly, so formatting can be an issue, and that was the case with this.
Yeah, the lines kind of moved around a little bit.
Yes, you ought to see it when it comes on the screen for the first time.
So, if I can, you're taking, they're taking a structure that doesn't currently meet all the standards, so it's existing non-conforming, and making everything conforming. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so...
Well, I don't know what's non-conforming, because when an application comes in and says, "We're going to scrape the lot," it's irrelevant to us whether it's conforming or non-conforming.
Yeah.
So, we didn't spend any time trying to measure if they were going to retain any portion of it. We certainly would have had that information, but when they scrape them clean, it becomes moot.
Yeah, I'm just kind of looking at the drawings. It looks like the old building was inside the setbacks in some parts. The new one is not going to be. This is kind of an odd question, but it's, where's the air conditioning unit set? Do we have any idea at all?
Should we close this?
No labor inducing tonight.
Hi, my name is Michelle Liu. I'm part of the architecture team. If you can go to A 1.01.
Yeah.
Okay, ooh, you were just there. That one, or go back, sorry. That one. So, can I come up and point? Would it be easier? That one right there. I think it's A 1.01. In the bottom-left corner, there's an AC unit pad. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so it's all the way back in the rear yard?
Yes.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking that is that, as far as I can tell, the city has declared some devices a structure. And I want to know if this device is indeed a structure, as the city defines it. It is?
AC units have not been defined as a structure to date.
Say again over?
They have not been.
They have not been?
Nope.
But other devices are structures?
Some.
Some have been treated as a structure due to a lack of existing code for them. It's something we're going to have to look at on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. So, a device that burns natural gas and produces electricity is a structure, but a device that uses electricity to compress gas is not a structure?
Apparently.
I don't know. It would depend on the circumstances. We have not treated AC units as structures in the past.
Okay, but other devices you are treating as structures?
Some, yes.
Okay, it seems to me we just need to consider being consistent?
Understood.
Thank you.
I have another question. How close to the other houses, how close to the houses is the air conditioning unit? Other houses?
They're far. Actually, if you, maybe if you go to the aerial in earlier sheets, keep going. Yeah, keep going. I think there's one even further back that might be zoomed back even further. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of backyard just opposite the back fence, and there's no house, I mean, next to where they...
Because they can be, those guys can be really loud.
Yeah, it's not, we've tucked it in a place where it's not going to be, shouldn't be bothering anybody, yeah. Thank you.
It could very well be that close, but if it's not treated as a...
The structure question becomes of all of them, I'm afraid.
Oh, sorry. Let me repeat that. It looks to me like the AC pad is within three feet of the rear property line.
It may be.
If so, then the structure question becomes relevant.
Right, and we do not treat AC units as structures and have not historically.
I think there's a problem there, because like I said, you are treating devices that burn natural gas and produce electricity as structures, but structures that use electricity to compress gas are not a structure. That's, that's a line that doesn't exist in the code, no matter how you read it. Either they are or aren't, but it should be treated consistently.
Are there any other questions for staff? With the applicant, does the applicant have a presentation to make?
No, just to answer questions.
None is required. Are there any questions for the applicant? Any further questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this matter?
Bob Havens, 1440 Adams. As far as that air conditioning unit goes, there's, there's big backyards in the back of that property, but then, what's her name next door on Pine Street? There's a neighbor next door on Pine Street that's relatively close. So, I mean, you saw the backyards or the houses away in front. So, there's one right next door, you know, where Dog Alley is and all that. So, she's there, and then Mike Thompson's back house is right there on the property line, too, so there are a couple of residences right there. The other question I had was on the, there's a variance for the setback, is that correct? There is no variance? I thought it was 17 feet versus 20 feet.
That's not this item. You're thinking of item 5.2.
Oh, my, 5.2?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a different property? That's Kearney Street?
That's 1650 Kearney?
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought, okay. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
My name's Leslie Dunlap. My wife, Darcy, and I live at 1510 Pine Street, just across the street from the property in question. We're, first of all, very happy to see the design that's being proposed. We were really dreading another mega mansion across the street from us. And secondly, in regards to the air conditioning unit, obviously, since we're totally opposite of where the air conditioner is, we are much more pleased with where the air conditioning unit is now, rather than trying to bring it forward towards Pine Street. I would disagree with Commissioner Ponte that the air conditioning units should be treated as a structural unit. I served as a planning and zoning commission for many years in another city, and I think the city staff has got it correct, that air conditioning units are not structural units. Thank you.
Thank you.
I almost hate to get into this, but I'd like to clarify.
You may. I'll give you the floor for that.
The point is, not that I consider them a structure, but the city has been treating some devices as if they were structures, all right? Very similar to this device to an air conditioning unit. So, I'm saying that they should be treated consistently, either one way or the other. Right now, what we have is a rule that says, or interpretation of a rule, that says, "This device is a structure," but that's the only device that's being treated as if it is a structure. No other devices are being treated as if they are a structure.
Is that true?
That's the point.
Can you say the name of the device that is being treated as a structure?
Generators.
Yes, it is a generator, and I actually assumed that it's a generator. And it's probably a generator that's housed with some kind of wooden structure to, or something or another. But generators can be much huger, much more noisier than air conditioners, so I still would disagree with you, John, sorry.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Mr. Pont?
I like the house. I like the design. I'm particularly pleased with the number of photovoltaic panels on the roof. It looks like it's going to be all-electric, 100% photovoltaic-driven by the number of panels. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a fine design, it's well-set back, it's appropriate for the area. I have absolutely no problems with this, and looks good to go.
I feel the same way, and in addition, I really want to thank you for, I mean, especially the support from the neighbors. That's really important from my position, and I'm assuming that you reached out, which I really appreciate. And also, that it's one-story. I think that's extremely important, so I fully support the project as well.
Commissioner Anderson?
I support the project. I think it's a great design. I'm also happy that it's one-story. It's very reasonable.
Commissioner Hale?
I support the project. I have no question.
I, although, design excellence is not a criteria for approval, this is, in terms of what we see, exceptional, and I appreciate that. So, it seems we would be ready for a motion.
I would move that the commission determine the project's exempt from SEQA and accept the acquired findings and approve the demolition permit and design review for the new single-family residence at 1515 Pine Street.
I second. I third.
So, I'll let you sort that out, Ms. Camaro.
Vice Chair Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Hale?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
And Chair Hardy?
Thank you. That brings us to item 5.2 on our agenda, which is a variance to reduce the rear yard setback on a corner lot located at 1650 Kearney Street. And Director Hickock, I believe this one is yours.
That's correct. Thank you, Chair Hardy. So, the existing 7,300-square-foot parcel is located on the northwest side of Kearney Street with frontage on both Kearney and Andrea Avenue. The property is currently developed with a 1,200-square-foot, single-story, three-bedroom, single-family home with an attached 500-square-foot garage that was built in approximately 1954. A city sewer line does run along the property line opposite Andrea Avenue. Currently, the Saint Helena Municipal Code requires that corner lots have three 20-foot setbacks, front, rear, and a side setback, and one 10-foot setback, which is considered the side yard. The applicant is requesting a variance in order to reduce one of the three 20-foot setbacks down to 17 feet, 17 feet, so that the location of the designated side yard can move thereby allowing room for an addition. And the purpose of a variance is to allow variation from the strict application of the terms of the municipal code whereby reason of the exceptional narrowness or unusual shape of a specific piece of property, or by reason of its exceptional size, shape, topographic conditions, or other extraordinary situations or conditions of such piece of property, or because the use or development of the lands immediately adjoining such property, the literal enforcement of the requirements of this title would involve practical difficulties or would cause undue hardship on the property owner. The setback adjacent to the sewer line of this property cannot accommodate an addition as it would make the home much larger than the 60-foot lot width maximum. The Saint Helena Municipal Code also defines the front of a lot as the narrow dimension which abuts the public or private right-of-way opposite the rear of the lot, which in this case would be Andrea Avenue, not Kearney. The home was constructed long before the required setbacks were established, and the applicant does not have the benefit of the same setbacks as others on their block and in the neighborhood. Due to combination of these factors, it can be argued that a hardship peculiar to the property not created by an act of the owner exists and may be resolved through consideration of variance. Earlier today, it was brought to staff's attention, the construction, some construction had occurred at the property. Myself and the building official went on, did a site visit, and did confirm that some work had been done, and appropriate actions, including potentially doubling the cost of the building permit fees, will be taken moving forward. With that said, for the reasons identified in the staff report, the staff does recommend that the planning commission determine that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15305, and accept the required findings and approve a variance for a reduced rear yard setback of 17 feet for the property located at 1650 Kearney Street. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Pont?
So, no matter what happens, the design right now has two 20s, a 17, and a 10. So, there's no way to get three 20s out of that at all, no matter if we dance around, which is front and which is rear.
Yeah, that's right.
Any reason, do you know of any reason why the design was done without 20 feet? I mean, was there a mismeasure? You know, I read that you've been in discussions with, with the owner and the city manager, so I can't imagine this didn't come up at some point.
No, it did. I think initially, they thought that 17 feet was 20 feet.
Okay.
They thought they had three 20 feet originally.
You mean when it was...
So, the existing, what's now their side yard, is 17 feet. They thought that was 20.
Yeah, yeah.
Based on what?
I don't... But when it was built, it was conforming, and then...
Yeah.
No, there were no standards.
As code changed.
I have to assume back in 1954 that it was conforming?
Yeah.
I thought you said there were no setback standards when it was built.
I didn't say that.
So, it would have been conforming, yeah. No, but I mean, as it was redesigned, this didn't come up until way down the road.
Well, I don't think we know what the setbacks were in 1954. It would take...
Probably zero.
Some rather determined research to sort that out. Municipal code we have going back much further, but I don't know when, there were already zoning provisions by '54. I've seen that, but I have no idea if they addressed setbacks or not. I think, what, Aaron will correct me if I'm wrong, what he's saying is that we don't know what provisions apply, and what Commissioner Pont is saying is that it's a fair inference that when it was constructed, it conformed to whatever the regulations were at that time.
Right, but I'm just, when it was designed now, the person who designed it must have looked at the current setback requirements, or, and they didn't measure, they just, what? Just assumed that they were the same when the house was built?
Yeah, maybe a mismeasure. I don't know.
Okay, so, yeah.
So, without a, pretty much a total redesign, and probably going two stories, although maybe you could get the same square footage in the box, this is potentially the applicant's only outlet.
Commissioner Hale? Anderson? I have questions, but I'll wait if someone else has some ahead of me. I'm looking at what's, page 52, Director Hickock of the printed staff report. There's a brief paragraph on issues, and I wanted to be sure I understand this. You said, "It should be noted that the applicant could construct an accessory structure up to 15 feet in height, three feet from what is now the rear property line..."
Yep.
"...with a building permit only."
Yeah.
Which property line are we referring to?
The one opposite Kearney. So, where, where the addition is being proposed, right now, they could put a detached accessory structure up to three feet from the rear prop, what is now the rear property line, which would be closer than the proposed addition.
But that doesn't, that doesn't change then.
No.
They could do that with this project, regardless of...
Just making a point that if, the concern was proximity of building to that property line, that now, an ADU could go there, an accessory structure could go there with building permits.
Now and in the future.
Yep.
Yeah. And then, that paragraph continues, "Approval of the variance would allow them to construct an addition that would be 10 feet from that same property line." I don't understand how the variance affects the setbacks on the boundary or property line opposite Kearney.
Because that is now what would be the rear yard, and that would become the side yard. The front yard would be Andrea, the rear yard would be opposite Andrea, the side would be Kearney, and the rear would be opposite Kearney. So, that would go from their rear yard to their side yard.
Well, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see how the application determines the front yard and the rear yard. It seems to me if that's a function of the lot dimensions and how the code applies to lot dimensions, it simply is what it is. The front yard for setback purposes is the same whether we approve a variance or not. It just is what it is. We may allow construction within a setback based on a variance, but we're not changing where the front yard is. The orientation of the house may or may not change, but the orientation of the house doesn't determine where the front yard and the rear yard are in terms of our setbacks in the code. So, I find this, I'm sorry, but I find it confusing.
So, it is a little bit confusing. So, there is also language in the code that the front yard is typically the narrowest dimension fronting a public or private street. In this case, that is Andrea.
Right.
And so, if, if, if this addition was, if we left it at, the front yard is on Kearney and the rear yard is opposite, and the... and the rear yard is opposite, and the front yard's Andrea...
But how could we do that if the code says that the front yard should be the narrowest dimension?
Because there's also provisions that in situations, the planning director can make the call what is the front, side, and rear. And right now, oh, so...
That I recall. So you have some discretion to determine, in this case, it would be Kearney as the front yard.
Well, it has to be, because it exists now. There are three 20-foot setbacks, so that is going to help define it, because it can't be in Andrea, because the rear yard setback's only 17 feet now. So that by default, that 17 is currently the side yard.
Well, if, sure, I mean, if there's a preference for applying the ordinance so as to make the existing structure conforming rather than to apply it so as to make it non-conforming, then I understand that.
Right.
That explains this, that the, as applied to the existing structure, the policy preference, if a conforming pattern exists, is to orient front and back to conform rather than to create a non-conforming situation simply by declining to exercise that discretion. That answers my question. Thank you.
So if I can add a little, hopefully clarify this. So, the front will be on Andrea, right? That makes the side 10 feet that conforms.
Correct.
Okay. And the side yard, which fronts Kearney...
Well, that would be the side, and the 10-foot would be the side yard.
Yeah, no, 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 the side yard that fronts Kearney, that's the side yard, right? This is a corner lot.
Corner lot, side is the corner, side yard is the one abutting the next property.
Okay, so you have, you have 20 feet, you have 20 feet, you have 10 feet, those all meet. The only one that doesn't meet is what will now be the backyard.
That's correct.
Right? And that also has the grace of following the directions as set in code. Okay. I'm, I'm going to go out a little on a limb here and suggest something, that when we go to rewrite the zoning code, the point that's important, as far as I can tell, is they have 20, 20, 20, and 10, right? And two of the 20s need to be adjacent to the public street. After that, I don't think I really care where the 10 and the 20 is, the remaining two, because frankly, some parcel is going to have 10 feet, some neighbor's going to have 10 feet, and some neighbor's going to have 20 feet. I don't think it really makes a difference at the end of the day which is side and which is rear, as long as there's three 20s and a 10 on a corner lot, and two of those 20s are directly adjacent to the street. Kind of like period. That'll make it easier in the future, we want to figure out what's the back, what's the side, what's the, in other words, you can dance those labels around, still meet code, and somebody ends up with a 10, and somebody else ends up with a 20. That's going to happen.
Wouldn't the address of the property determine what the back yard is?
No, it doesn't, unfortunately.
The assignment of an address is a completely independent process. Historically, it's been close to arbitrary.
A public works function.
These days, address assignment is driven more than anything else by the requirements for our emergency service providers, who have a strong preference for an orderly system that gives them consistent and correct directions to the place they need to be. All of this looms much larger out in the unincorporated area where one can easily get lost, that probably less of a problem here, but, you know, back in the day, in many areas, you could basically pick your own address.
Addresses usually go by where the front door is, right? Our code sets the front by the narrowest dimension on a corner lot.
Right.
It's just a completely independent determination.
The planning director has the ability to change that, if they care to.
So, there's nothing that requires you to have your front door facing the determined front yard? It just doesn't.
It is.
The 17 feet, where is that? The genesis of the variance is in the back?
Yeah, that'll be the rear yard.
The defined rear, which is opposite Andrea.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it looks like a side yard is actually a rear yard.
And it's supposed to be something not the result of human effort that determines...
You're thinking about the findings, then?
Well, whether it's, whether or not it can be considered a variance.
That sounds like the first finding.
Okay.
I mean, I think with respect to the findings, we'll probably do best...
To wait?
Well, yeah, when we deliberate to go through one at a time, unless you have some question you think needs to be answered now. I think...
I was just wondering what the, it says that you, the city manager and stuff, I mean, what was it that was different about this, physically different about this lot that other lots on the block didn't have to, I mean, I think you, let's see, it's after looking at how the existing home is positioned on the lot in comparison to the other homes in the immediate area, it was determined that the variance was viable. But they're going to... Okay, so, yeah, so tell me more about that.
Well, I mean, I think there are aerial, there should be some aerial views attached to the staff report. If you just look at the surrounding neighbors and neighborhood, a large percentage of them have five-foot side setbacks, side yard setbacks, 15, 10.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying. Thank you.
You might want to look at it as currently existing non-conforming, right? They're adding to the house, but they're not adding to the house in what would be the non-conforming yard setback.
So they're conforming to the non-conformity of the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Adapting, this is evolution.
Would it not have been possible to, to have made the determination that Andrea is, is considered the front, and the 17 feet is an existing non-conforming situation, in which case the 10-foot would have been conforming, and then would have negated the need for a variance?
No, I, I don't think that'd be a viable way to look at it. When you have an existing conforming lot, if you look at it one way, I don't think it would be proper to look at it a different way. So they have 20, 20, 20, 10-plus. That dictates to me what the yards are.
I think if the code said, "It's only the narrowest dimension is the front," and no one can ever say any, any different, then you might, I think, have a good case. But because the code says, "You can move the front."
Right, but we're choosing to have our new interpretation, we're switching the front. I'm just suggesting that it would have been less problematic because it wouldn't have thrown us in, it wouldn't have thrown the applicant into a variance position, which is by design not, is a disadvantage. And I, and I think this discussion is probably, you know, maybe the definition of hardship that wasn't brought on by, you know, is brought on over time and by changing rules. So I don't, I don't think that we, in my mind, I don't, I don't have a, I think we've met the threshold of, of, you know, squirrely, you know, adequately squirrely situation that, that, you know, brings on, you know, consideration of a variance. So I'm just suggesting it might have been, given this discussion, less problematic because since the applicant is not changing the 17-foot setback, to have made the determination that that is an existing legal non-conforming, which is nearly all of her neighbors, having, having lived two, three doors down from this house at one point, have existing legal non-conforming setbacks. I mean, their sides, their sides are five. A lot of, a lot of these neighbors, the side setbacks are five, and they're perfectly legal. I'm just suggesting two things, you know. Number one, I think we, I think this discussion reflects that the variance is probably, should be considered, but, and perhaps if we, if we approached this differently in the beginning, it may not have been required. Which is kind of having it both ways, but...
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to address the commission? Fair enough. Are there any questions for the applicant? Well, this will seem a bit silly, since you're the only one here, but the process being what it is, I will open the hearing and ask if there are any members of the public who would like to speak, and seeing none, I will close the public hearing. That was a quick one. And bring it back to the commission for discussion. We can start anywhere, anywhere anyone wishes to, but I do think at some point, we should be walking through the findings. Well, and I'm happy to start there, if the rest of the commission thinks that would be most helpful, and we can digress as needed if digressions come up, but I...
Well, I suggest you go backwards.
Go backwards?
I'm not kidding, on the list. Well...
So the argument, can I ask, so the argument, the hardship peculiar to this property, the not created by an act of the owner, is where the house is placed already. Is that, is that the argument?
Well...
Because it's already, it's already non-conforming.
The argument is set out here, or it's a summary of the applicant's response, right? So we have, we have first the findings from the code listed, and then the staff report lists the applicant's responses. So the applicant makes several observations, including the constraints of the 60% maximum width in relation to the, what is the side yard, if Andrea is the front. That's the yard opposite Kearney, where the, apparently that's where the sewer easement goes.
That's the 17-foot one?
No.
No.
Sewer easement's the side opposite Andrea.
Oh, okay, well...
I thought that was it.
Yeah. So adding, well, that's the 17, then what does this second sentence mean? Excuse me, Erin, but then I'm confused understanding this paragraph, if you'd help me out, please.
Second sentence under...
Under the summary of applicant's response to mandatory findings. "They cannot add in the yard adjacent to sewer easement, as it would make the home wider than the 60% maximum."
That's right.
"That's the same as the rear yard," because now you're talking about the yard opposite Andrea.
I think he's saying, if you make Kearney the front yard...
As, yeah, as it stands now, Kearney's the front yard, so that side is currently the side yard. That's what is the existing 17 feet.
See, if you make Kearney the front yard, then you've got 10 feet.
Adjacent, not opposite.
But then it makes it wider than the 60%.
So if Kearney's the front, then that's the issue. So that's the first point. The second just goes to why one would select Andrea as the front, although the first point really goes to that too. And, and the applicant notes that the home was built in the 1950s before the setbacks were required, and then that they are now being held to a standard different than their neighbors. I don't believe that's actually true, but it is true that there are lots of homes that don't meet current setbacks. So, I mean, I think the, a more accurate description here would be that, at least as I understand the age of the neighborhood, most of these homes were probably subject to the same setbacks, if any existed, as the current house at 1650 was when it was constructed. I don't know that there's any difference in the rules that were applied at the time the homes were constructed. But I'm going to entertain Commissioner Pont's suggestion that we start at the end and work our way back to the beginning. There's something very Alice in Wonderland-ish about that, so let's start with E. "The required finding is that the variance in any buildings or structures permitted by the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community." Any commissioner comments on finding E?
Doesn't apply, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any difficulty making that finding. Seems that we all agree. Then, finding D. "The condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for such condition or situation." That's a mouthful.
I don't know if that's true.
I would think the answer to that one would also be no, for two reasons. One, many of the houses in town were built according to current code, so it doesn't hit those. Two, the only real fix for this is changing all the setbacks all over town. If you were going to do a rule that fixes this problem, I...
Doesn't one have to start by defining the problem?
The problem was the house is built far enough back such that setbacks were different. This modification doesn't impact that section of yard that is in question. It's also true that no matter what you do to this house, if you're going to keep it one story, no matter what you do to this house, something's going to be out of conformance. It's either going to be wider than the 60%, or it's going to be inside one of the setbacks. 20, 20, 20, and 10 is a tough standard to meet. It really is, particularly when you throw the 60% width on top of it. It sticks you in a real narrow envelope.
I don't understand. I thought the deal was if you, if it's already non-conforming, if what you're applying for does not increase the non- if what you're applying for does not increase the nonconformity, there's not an issue. So I don't even see why there has to be a variance. I mean, I guess I just don't understand the idea of the variance, that the house is there, nonconforming. Nothing that's being done to it is going to make it worse, so how can you?
The houses that exist now is not nonconforming, it's conforming.
But is that because you're changing where the front is, that now it's nonconforming because now the 17-foot place is a place that's supposed to be 20?
It meets the required setbacks as the code requires now, so it's three 20 feet and a 10. So this addition is requiring essentially us changing.
Well, you can't require something about a house that's already built, well, wait a second, you can't require, you can't require a house that's already built to change to conform to a new standard. I mean, is that what, is that why there has to be, I don't get that.
The applicant is proposing changes to the structure.
Yes.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
But the changes aren't exacerbating the nonconformity in any way. It's, they're just staying, that's my understanding unless I'm wrong there. Everything is staying, the nonconformity is the same.
What the applicant is saying in this was clearer for me in any event in the exchange I had with Director Hickok regarding the issues paragraph. The applicant actually needs this reorientation of the front yard in order to be able to expand in the direction opposite Kearney into what presently is the rear yard. So they are really asking both for the change in front yard designation and the variance because there's no other way for this expansion to get even close to conforming with the setback requirements that are peculiar to all corner lots.
So the expansion is the culprit, not, I mean, and that's definitely a, that's a person-made decision.
If we're and we can go to paragraph A and talk this through there because that's where your comment.
Let me try this. Right now, okay? The way the house is structured, the current structure, okay? If you consider the front on Kearney, they have 20 feet on Kearney, all right? Front yard setback, fine. They have 20 feet off Andrea, side yard setback, fine.
Twice neither.
They have 17 feet on the side that has the easement, right? That would be the other side yard. You only need 10, you got 17.
No, that's the backyard of Kearney.
And they have, they have, what is it, 24 in the back now, or 22 in the back now, something like that. So it's all.
That's the one opposite Kearney?
Yeah. That's all copacetic right now, the right now backyard, that's all copacetic, all right? Our code says because the narrow parts on Andrea, that's really the front.
Okay, got that.
Okay? If that's really the front, then the backyard is only 17 feet.
The side yard?
No, what is the backyard?
Or is that the other end?
Directly opposite.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, directly opposite Andrea.
Can I, can I inject something here? Maybe. The exist, if, if we're considering Kearney the front right now, which I think is the assumption that's been made, the width of the structure is 71 feet, seven and a half inches, which is 66% lot width, which is, which is not conforming. Which, in my view, argues that you'd be, you would have been better off considering Andrea the front. The lot width, or the built width, is actually conforming currently and is, and continues to be conforming 60%, or not, not more than 60%. The back at 17 is an existing nonconformance at that point and a variance is not required.
Y'all are making my brain hurt.
Well, let's see.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find a solution, really, that, that makes, you know, because I, I, I mean, I see it, I can see, I can look at this both ways and argue that, that a variance is legitimate and is a reasonable thing. But I think if we can sculpt this in a way that, that interprets it by code and first declares that the existing building is nonconforming to begin with, because, because, because it doesn't, it doesn't adhere to the 60% lot width. And on top, you know, if you layer into that, that the, that the code also defines the front of the lot as the narrower piece. In my view, that preponderance of weight should push us in the other direction to not require a variance. And, and accept that that side, that side setback is 10, that the back is, is an existing nonconformance, that they're not messing with, they're not altering. To me, that's an easier path.
I would like to say that, but it's, looking at the code, it's, it's not clear how to address this juncture you're talking about. I mean, the code literally says the purpose of a variance is to allow variation from the strict application of the terms of this title.
Right, I'm, I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting that we, that, that the things I've pointed out eliminate the need to go there and find those, which I, which I think should be, should be a high bar. You know, and, you know, a variance should be a high, a very, you know, serious thing to consider. What I'm suggesting is if, if we can agree that, number one, the house as exists, as, as built, has through no fault of the previous or current owner, is currently nonconforming. Which I think opens the door to, to make, you know, and, and I think falls in line if you take the other definition of the front as the skinnier one. I, I would suggest that, that that would have, would be a smoother track and a more appropriate course.
Well, there's no definition of code unfortunately for nonconforming.
I, I appreciate the exploration of a path that avoids the need for variance. It's not at all clear to me that the discretion to make a determination about which is or isn't the front yard for a corner lot is transferable, if you will, or assignable from the planning director to the commission. I haven't heard anything or read anything to suggest that that determination is within the scope of our authority. It seems to me pretty clear that it is within the scope of the director's authority. So I just, I'm mindful of that. I'm a bit concerned about the stretch one has to make to say that the structure that is nonconforming as to width, if the front yard is on Kearney, allowable, if you will, nonconforming as to a rear setback when we've changed the front yard from Kearney to Andrea. I understand that the distances involved haven't changed, but you've changed the development standard that's that defines the nonconformity, so that that's a slick game of cards and maybe a little too slick for me. I just, I'm uncomfortable with that. personally, I've probably reached the limit of my enthusiasm, perhaps even willingness, to entertain variances to fix problems with the design. And I just really have a hard time creating for myself a straight-faced argument that the hardship is peculiar to the property in the terms that, that ordinarily means, and I think they were recited by Director Hickok earlier in the presentation. It has to do with lot configuration typically, sometimes topography, but generally speaking, lot configuration or physical attributes of the land, not where did someone decide to build a house 70 years ago? What, what we're being asked to do is to find a unique attribute of this property based on the fact that it was built in a particular way in the 1950s that did not establish as a great a nonconformity or any nonconformity when other properties did. That really doesn't seem to me to be the situation that a variance is for. And if we look at the problem as being rooted in the corner lot setbacks, and they do impose a burden that's different from other lots. But that, it seems to me, is exactly the kind of issue that can be corrected by the formulation of a general regulation, that is to say, by amending the way in which we regulate corner lots. So you know, I know we have been, I would say, fairly generous in although not without some debate and dissent, following staff's lead in taking a flexible approach to resolving issues that have come up after an applicant's been heavily invested in design. I think that's much more well, I'm more accepting of that, I guess is a better way to put it, when we're taking issue with an approach that staff has validated in discussions with an applicant, as opposed to finding a cure for a situation which staff's position has been all along, you know, that doesn't conform to the rules. I have a hard time with this. You know, and it's not that I think 17 feet as opposed to 20 is significant. I don't. I really don't know exactly what we accomplish by imposing a greater total yard setback on corner lots from other lots. It, I assume without knowing that there's some notion that every property needs a rear yard that's bigger than a side yard, but again, I'm not sure why. So I'm not invested in that concept and I'm not troubled by the existence of 17 feet as opposed to 20 at all. to put it in conversational language, it's not a big deal is not a basis for variance, right? The threshold, the findings we're asked to make for a variance are supposed to be a significant bar so that we don't put ourselves in a position of bending all the rules all the time, or so often that, that it that they don't really matter. And that's, that's the fundamental concern about how one processes variances and I don't, I don't know what the right solution is. I'm not, I'm not looking to discourage my fellow commissioners from finding one, I'm just articulating my sentiments on this.
May I suggest that I'm beginning to think that Commissioner Hale has hit on the solution, and let me tell you why. To start off with, according to our code, the front of the house is Andrea, right? Okay? Even though it really looks like the front of the house is on Kearney, unless the planning director says the front of the house is on Kearney, which I don't think he has done, the front of the house is on Andrea, right? Now, let me read you this section of code about nonconforming. A nonconforming building, structure, or other physical feature shall not be reconstructed except as provided in subsection D of this section, expanded or enlarged unless the new work will be in conformance of the regulations and standard of the zoning district in which it is located and the provisions of the zoning ordinance. So the new work is not in the nonconforming yard. The new work, except for some moving around the walls inside, right? Is all in what is the side yard if the front is on Kearney. So we have an existing nonconforming structure that is being expanded not into the place, piece that is nonconforming, but into the piece that is. Unless the new work will be in conformance of the regulations and standard of the zoning district. So as far as I can tell, the new work, thank you, Daniel, for putting us onto that, is conforming. It's the old work that is not. So by that, this doesn't require, thank you again, Daniel, I'm gonna keep saying that until you say something about that. The new work is conforming, the old work is nonconforming. We're not looking at the nonconforming old work, we're looking at the conforming new work. So all of a sudden, as far as I can tell, this all goes away, except for design review, right? I think it's a fine design. Now, we can't do it tonight because that's not on the agenda. We'd have to suck this sucker back.
The design review would be ministerial, it would be a staff-level approval.
Because of the scope? The scope is less than. The scope, it's less than half the building, right?
It's, it's a, it's a small residential addition. There's no height being added, there's no stories, no living space being added.
I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I generally speaking don't like this thing, but in this case, it, it worked out rather handily. Now, if they were gonna tear the whole building down, let's say, they couldn't do it, right? But because they're adding in a spot that remains conforming, the new work is all in a conforming yard if the front is where the front is supposed to be, and the planning director, as far as we can tell, had never said the front is Kearney, the front's always been on Andrea. So, this all goes away.
That is, I think, the question, which I must direct to the director.
If the commission would, would so choose, I am happy to make the term, the determination of what is and what isn't a front, the front yard. I have not done that yet. That would be something I would likely do through, at the office.
All right. That would be part of your ministerial design review.
If you would, if you would like to leave that at my discretion, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, it's pretty clear the front is Andrea by our code.
Commissioner Minette? What say you?
Well, that's what I was saying before, but I didn't say it very clearly. I've, you know, since the nonconformity is, is the offender is the current house, and the new construction is not adding to it in any way. I didn't see how it would, you know, I, I didn't understand why they had to be a variance. But, no, I, I, I think it, I have no objection to this project at all, but I like how you said it. I, I don't think I, with a straight face, could find A. So, you know, it's just, I've done that enough times, I don't want to do that again. So, that's my feeling.
This was a really confusing one.
What'd you say?
This was a really confusing one. I have to agree with-
It's confusing for you.
Commissioner Hale and Commissioner Pont. I think that if the code defines Andrea, the narrow part, as the front yard, that it's a current nonconforming.
Well, following Commissioner Pont's reading of the distinction between the existing construction and the new construction in the context of how the code addresses nonconformities, I, I, I find this an elegant solution to a vexing problem. So...
No, no, you're elegant, Dan.
Oh, I thought he aspired to be elegant. But-
That's an oxymoron.
Let us not digress. that does then raise the question of whether there is an action for the commission to take. I'm thinking not.
No action.
In that case, we have a solution that requires no formal action by the commission, and it's a better solution, I think, by far. You're welcome. And that's that for item 5.2. So, this is the point where I tend to accelerate through the rest of the agenda. Did you have something else to say?
I just, I made a, an announcement at council. Just wanted to let you guys know, in case you didn't know. We did receive our SB 2 grant from the state of California. We got the letter from HCD, so we got that extra money for our zoning code update.
Awesome.
Does that mean that's gonna cover consultants, or?
It's gonna help.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay.
If I can ask then, while we, while I've been on the commission, I'm sure the rest of you remember this as well. There's supposedly been a list forming of fixes that need to get done. Did that list get found?
There's not a formal list.
Yeah, but it's informal.
Informally,
Yes.
I have volunteered to work with Aaron to prepare a list to be submitted to the consultants.
Okay. Well, put, put dancing around on a corner lot on the list.
Okay. I will make a note right now.
No, dancing should be allowed anywhere in town. I don't agree with the language there.
So, there are no scheduled matters. Are there any department reports?
Sorry, the SB 2 is a department report.
Ah, there it was. Excellent. The agenda forecast is available with the conveniently provided link. You know what's next? Adjourned.